We'll call the meeting to order. And this is the Committee of the Whole Public Works Environmental Services and Facilities. And it's the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. And it is also a virtual hybrid meeting. So we do have members on our screen. Could I have an approval of the agenda, please, as circulated?
I can move.
I have a mover. Do I have a second here? Deputy Mayor Deshaun, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Kerry, thank you. Do we have any disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof?
I have one. Seven, I, not tenure, because the company I'm involved with, tenure the document.
And have you given the paperwork to the board?
No.
Okay, thank you.
None here.
Thank you.
None.
Thank you, Kerry, none. All right, we're going to move on now to business arising from the previous Committee of the Whole minutes, if any, and it's on pages one through eight in your package.
Nothing arising here.
Hearing none. I just have one. It's on page seven of the minutes. And it's just a question. It's regarding the mayor's report regarding the Circle K in Cardinal. Have you heard any more about that situation, Mr. Mayor?
The problem seems to have been resolved, although I don't know the details of how or why.
Okay, I thought that would be the answer. Thank you.
I spoke to the owner and he's quite pleased.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Any other, any other concerns? Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you. To delegations and presentations, we have none tonight. Discussion items, we have none tonight. Now we're at seven, which is the action and information item. And the first one is the development agreement between Robertson slash Burkhardt. And there is a recommendation on this. And the briefing note is on pages nine to fifty-five, quite extensive. And Wendy, can you highlight some background on this for us, please?
Sure, I can. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So late last year, the Community Development Committee reviewed a severance application at the corner of Glenns Mail and County Road forty-four. The property was mostly covered in provincially significant woodlands. So following our official plan policies, the committee recommended that, in favor of the severance, but with the condition that the applicant do an environmental impact assessment to show that there be no negative impacts on the ecological functions of the woodland. So after CDC made their recommendation, the county has received a concern, a report from a concerned citizen about the environmental impact that the severance might have there. Also, the Conservation Authority made a recommendation as well in support of the township's recommendation for the environmental impact assessment, but also to include the aquatic habitat in that environmental impact assessment. The county is conditionally granted the severance with the conditions that the township and the Conservation Authority requested. So the applicant went ahead and got the environmental impact assessment completed. Now, instead of that assessment saying that the proposed development will not have a negative impact on the environmental or ecological functions of the woodlands, it said that it would, with proper control measures, would the development could be mitigated, or the, sorry. With properly implemented controls within a development agreement, it would be sufficient to mitigate the potential impacts of the proposed development. So we don't do this very often, or we haven't in my two years with the township, but it recommended a development agreement. And so we drafted one up. And the applicant has reviewed it and has signed it. The tricky part with a development agreement here is that it's a condition of the severance that it's in place. But we can't create that parcel and register the agreement on title of the property until the severance is final and the deed is stamped. So in this case, the applicant has had his lawyer produce solicitor's undertaking that says they would register the agreement on title once the severance is finalized. So we would need to sign off on the condition, and then they would register the agreement on title.
Okay, yes, thank you. And that, all that is in the briefing note, the agreement and the lawyers' letter as well. All in the briefing notes. Okay, I'm going to start at my far left. Counselor, do you have any questions, concerns?
Nothing here, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I have a couple of questions through the chair. So through the chair to Wendy. Wendy, I'm looking at this BCH Environmental Consultants' Report. And I'll just pick one page to draw something to your attention. Actually, two questions. So on page twenty-five of ninety-three of our package, or page five of thirty-four of the environmental consulting, if you could get those in front of you. Just have two questions. And the first question is this. Do you notice at the top of the page that it refers to forty-one, forty-nine County Road four? It's actually County Road forty-four. And that same error continues throughout this environmental consulting report. And I'm just surprised that nobody caught it and had him reissue his report. But it's not a small thing. But it just, it just makes it less than perfect, if I can put it that way. So the second question that I have, and I'm still looking at page twenty-five of ninety-three. And on page twenty-five of ninety-three, I've got a color version in front of me which shows, I think, the severed portion being the portion that's surrounded by an orange line. Is that the part to be retained? Because I take it that the sliver that's up, that rests on Glenns Mail Road is already severed? Or is it to be severed?
The, the part in orange called the subject lands, that is the part to be severed. So that is the part that the environmental impact assessment was completed for.
Okay, so am I right in deducing that they're trying to separate the part in orange from the part that's already developed? Is that the intent here?
Yes. The part in purple is, already has a house on it. So it's already been developed, and they're severing the orange part off of the purple part.
Okay, so that's the intent. And then, of course, once that gets severed, we'll be, somebody will be looking for a building permit on the orange portion. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And they'll have to follow through all the hoops of this DCH Environmental Consulting Report.
Yes.
Okay, well, that answers my questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Deputy Mayor? Counselor Hunter?
No.
Gentlemen?
No.
Okay, and I, and I have nothing. So we do have, as I said before, a recommendation. And it does say County Road forty-four in the recommendation. And that council directs staff to provide written release of condition number three of severance. B seventy-seven dash twenty, United Kansas, Canada, and, thank you, authority. And I wanted to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And it's Kerry. Thank you. Ooh, we do, don't worry. We need a mover and a second. Can I have a mover for the recommendation? Yes. Deputy Mayor?
Good ask.
And second? Counselor Hunter, thank you. All in favor? Just testing Rebecca. Okay, now we're going to move on. And that brings us to seven B, which is the cost recovery agreement between Meadowlands subdivision, that's on pages fifty-six to sixty. And of course, there is a recommendation for that. And who's going to highlight this? Was that you, Wendy?
I can do this as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lockwood Brothers Construction, they already have a draft plan approval in place for a subdivision on the northeast end of Cardinal. In the past few weeks, they have expressed some interest in furthering their application to proceed with development there. Our planning fee schedule, that bylaw does outline that where the cost of development exceeds the application fee, that those costs would be incurred by the developer. So the, in this case, the fee was paid when the application was made back in two thousand and nine. And those funds have been used up. They have since revised their application. And everything has been settled financially then. There's no monies owing to the township. But knowing that they are going to further the application, there will be some planning fees and likely some peer reviews as well. It's, it's just easier and cleaner for both parties if we outline the expectation in review and processing agreement.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll start, I'll start my far, far right, Mr. Bush. Any concerns or questions regarding this? Mr. Packwood? Counselor Hunter? Deputy Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I have lots of questions.
Go right ahead.
Well, first of all, through the chair. So Wendy, now they're proceeding to the next step here. And I'm assuming that there's a fee schedule to at least go to this next step. What is the amount in that fee schedule?
There, there actually isn't in our fee schedule. So they would have paid the fee for a subdivision application back in two thousand and nine. But I, I don't know what the fee was that they paid in two thousand and nine, but those fees have since been used up. Now, as they're proceeding with the development, there's just going to be more costs. And there isn't any left in that account that was set aside with their application fee in it. So we need to be able to recover our costs.
Yes, I know. So what are those costs? Are those, what are those estimates of costs?
Well, we don't have an estimate yet. But I know there are going to be planning, planning fees. And there are reports that they are going to have to prepare and studies that we would probably want peer reviewed. So I think it's best that at, just at the outset, at the beginning, we make our expectations clear that they would need to be responsible for those costs.
Yes. Well, again, through the chair, we entered into these agreements before. I'm familiar with them. But generally, we give the proponent, the person that's asked, we give that proponent an estimate of what kind of costs they're looking at. We're going to enter into an agreement with them. I believe it's a, it's a two-way agreement between, yes, between two oh five, seventy, seven, six Ontario Inc. and ourselves. So, you know, do they, I mean, I'm prepared to sign the agreement. It's a blank agreement. It's a blank check, really, for us to charge them whatever our costs are. Have they not asked what the estimated costs will be?
No, they have not.
Well, okay, if that's the way they want to do business, I guess that's okay. But I'm surprised that we wouldn't have asked to be able to at least inform them of, of what kind of costs they're looking at. Because I know that we're going to incur planning fees. I know we're going to incur reports. You're indicating that we're probably going to want to peer reviews. I mean, this is a, do they, do they indicate, or do they ask us how long will this process take?
No, they haven't asked us how long the process would take. I think they are, they might look at doing some revisions to their draft plan, but they're still in a proposal, like, in developing a proposal. And I think creating some plans and preparing the studies. So it's difficult to say what the costs are going to be at this stage.
Okay, so have we asked our planner for any idea or any estimates of what he thinks it will cost to get them to the next date? The reason I'm asking these questions now is we have a similar, a similar agreement with the Charlotte subdivision. So I'm asking these questions now because the same questions apply to both, both of these instances. Have, have we asked our planner what the anticipated costs will be here?
No, have not asked our planner what the anticipated costs will be.
Okay, well, all right, Mr. Chair.
It's, I, I think it's a good agreement, I think, because it puts us in a, it's a blank check for us. Yes, that's what it is. Exactly. Mr. Dilba, any concerns, questions? Okay, the recommendation is that committee recommend that council enter in, enter into a review and processing agreement with number two oh five, seven, eight, seven, six Ontario Inc. as attached. Can I get a mover for that, please? Counselor Hunter, seconder, and Deputy Mayor, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's Kerry. Thank you. And that moves us on to the next item, which is seven C, which is again a cost recover agreement with the Charlotte subdivision. And it, it is basically the same, the same agreement. It's in your briefing note for you to, to read. Any questions or concerns? I'll start with Counselor Dilba.
Yes, I have one there. Maybe duly chaired to the CEO. Under the agreement, this Edwardsburg Development Inc., do we do any background checks to see if they're financially stable and that they are going to take out their warranty for these new homes if anything goes wrong? So we're not sitting with a liability suit on our hands if something calls back? I do know, and I've done work for, for the other one before, so I have no problems with them, with the Meadowlands. But this particular one, Edwardsburg Development Inc., do we do any of that before we become partners with them?
So through, 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 through the chair, this is, this is partners with, with respect to planning only. Not, not, not the, not the subdivision itself, so to speak.
But do, do we think we should have an obligation to see where they're standing financially, their background, or anything like that?
So through, through, through the chair, once again, as, as a subdivision agreement would go, I'm, I'm quite sure that we would want to be taking some securities to ensure protection. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so I have a number of questions here as well. Just trying to think of how to phrase the first question. Has the agent for Edwardsburg Development Inc. identified himself?
He, um, yes, I've spoken with the agent for Edwardsburg Development Inc. Um, but have asked for a a signed document that, from the owner, that says he will be acting as their agent. We haven't received that yet. But this agreement would be between us and Edwardsburg Development Inc.
Is the, is the agent, the agent of Edwardsburg Development Inc.? Is, is the agent's appointment signed by the president of Edwardsburg Development Inc.?
No.
Oh, who signed his appointment?
So through, so through the chair, I, I, I believe that Wendy had indicated that we're still waiting for that document to be signed to indicate that he's the agent.
Oh. Oh, well, that's what the briefing note says. Says the owner or the authorized agent has submitted a planning application. So the owner is Edwardsburg Development Inc.
Correct.
So is it, is it from Edwardsburg Development Inc., the president? Or is it from the agent? Who is it that has submitted a planning application?
So I will, I, I refer to, to Wendy to indicate you had provided that.
If I may, through the chair, I believe it was Colin Jardine who was acting as the agent. And when we received some inquiries from a new individual, I checked with Colin Jardine to confirm that I could correspond with the new individual as agent. But I don't have anything signed from the new individual, from Edwardsburg Development Inc. That indicates he is officially their agent.
Okay, well, the only point that I'm going to make here, Mr. Chairman, is the following one. This agreement that we're going to approve here tonight is with the corporation, the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal, which will be signed by the CEO of the corporation, which is the mayor, which is me, and Edwardsburg Development Inc., which should be signed by the president of Edwardsburg Development Inc. Or the agent who has been appointed by that corporation. And it's that document that I'm looking for. So I have no problem proceeding to action the agreement here. But I'm asking all of these questions because there's quite a historical, there's a background behind this that I'm not at liberty to talk. So I think you can proceed with the, with actioning the action item. But I'll be, before I sign the document, that's what I'll be looking for.
I see. So through, through, through the chair, as, as will we?
Yes, I'm sure.
Okay.
And, and, and one thing further.
Go ahead.
Again, I'm, I'm just surprised that nobody has asked for an estimate of the costs here because this, this agreement that we're entering into is to make sure that, that they pay our full costs of going to the next stage. As the briefing note indicates, this draft plan of, this subdivision has draft plan approval. And I think the draft plan approval ends out in twenty twenty-three, if I'm not mistaken. It'll end at the same time as the previous one.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two. So these draft plan approvals expire in twenty twenty-two unless they're brought to final, unless they're brought to final approval. And so what we're doing here is removing these draft plans to final approval. It's an expensive process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Deputy Mayor?
No.
Counselor Hunter?
No, I have the same question, Mayor. I had over this week. And we had some history along these lines. And I just think our, our staff will make sure that the proper documents are signed. Personally, I would sooner see it signed by the president rather than the agent. But, but I, I understand why it's basically an open and check here. The way prices are fluctuating and planning and stuff right now, all going down that we're, we're under. I very much doubt that we can get any real firm, actual estimates that they're going to give us for what it's going to cost. So many regulations changing and, and time fluctuations and stuff. So I, I think they pretty well recognize that too as developers, that they're not going to be able to get any estimate that's going to be.
No, no, but it's going to be between ten and twenty thousand. Yeah.
I'm fine with as long as we get the, I'd like to see the president's name on it, not just agents' name either.
I agree with you. Well, it says I have authority to bind, so.
And in the legal battle, what would that be?
Well, it's got a, if it's got the corporate stamp on it, it'll mean something.
Yeah. Mr. Packwood?
Mr. Bush?
Okay, could I have a mover for the recommendation? The recommendation reads that committee recommend that council enter into a review and processing, enter into a review and processing agreement with Edwardsburg Development Inc. as, as attached. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Hunter and a seconder? And Mr. Packwood, thank you. All right, I'm going to call the question. All in favor of the recommendation? Thank you. Okay, thank you. That's Kerry. And that now brings us to seven D, which is the GPS system contract update. This is information only. And I believe, Mr. Spencer, would you highlight this for us, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Every three years, we sign on with our GPS fleet company for, for new technology, bigger states upgrading, just like a cell phone, GPS units. So we upgrade them every three years. This year, we've been able to work out a better deal. We're still staying with TELUS and fleet complete innovation. And over the course of the three years, it'll be at eighty-five hundred to a nine thousand dollar savings.
I see that. That's, that's always good news.
Yes.
Okay, anything else to highlight, Mike? Thank you.
Installed this week.
Okay, I'll start with Mr. Bush. Do you have any concerns or questions regarding this? Okay, Mr. Packwood?
I think it's a good deal.
Counselor Hunter?
I think it's a good deal. I just, I think it requires just roughly how much a year does it cost us for these? We're saving as much, but how much are we still paying?
Through the chair to Counselor Hunter, each vehicle is twenty dollars per month. Which is a fourteen dollar savings per month from what we are currently doing now. So that's really your savings is.
So it was thirty-four dollars?
It was thirty-four, and we've got it down to twenty.
And that's, that's now been in the, in the trucks for ten years or so, isn't it?
Yes.
How many, oh, sorry.
No.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
New vehicles?
Through the chair to the, to Mr. Mayor, twenty vehicles in total. Which includes our sidewalk as well. And the roadside mower that's used during the summer.
So a further question says the new units will be installed on the applicable vehicles. So what is the unit that goes in the vehicle?
Through the chair to the mayor, it's basically some, a little bit bigger than a cell phone package. It, it's just the hardware that gets put into it, and it's done rebuilding the technology.
So is it wired into the vehicle?
Wired into the vehicle. Up, up under the dash where, where they can't be, can't be moved.
Oh, okay. All right, so that answers my question.
Counselor?
Oh, so we're paying them roughly four thousand dollars a month now, I guess, right? Twenty times twenty?
Four hundred.
Four hundred a month?
Yeah.
Okay, so thirty-six hundred a year, four times, about forty-eight hundred a year. And we're going to cut it down to?
Eight thousand, between eighty-five hundred and nine thousand. We're paying for the installation this year. Where typically what we could, what in past years, the cost was at thirty-four dollars, which included the installation. So it's cheaper to have their technician come down, TELUS's technician come down and install them as opposed to fleet complete. So that's where we're saving the money is in the monthly cost of the installation.
Ah, okay, I heard you. They got that upfront on the twenty?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, that was it, information item. And that's, that's now, we're going to move on. And we now go to seven E, which is the co-year lease agreement for the fire department. It appears that we need a new, new copy. Hence the lease agreement. Mr. Moore, would you highlight, or Chief Moore, would you highlight this request for us, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. So the current agreement, I believe it's a five-year agreement, expires next month. So we, we looked around a little bit. We got a price from our current provider, Digital Business Systems. And we also got a price from Future Office Products, which is the supplier for the photocopier at the township office. The financial considerations are there for you to review. We are saving, I guess, a substantial money going with, with our recommendation. And I'll just point out that this photocopier serves both the fire department and the public works.
Thank you. Now, now, Chief Moore, were we going from both digital systems and future office products, were we going to get a new copier? Or are we giving a new copier if we went with future?
Through the chair, I believe they were both brand-new copy.
Thank you. That's all, that's all, all I have. So I'll start with Counselor Dilba. Thank you. That's all that's all all I have. So I'll start with Counselor Dillawatt. Any questions?
No.
Deputy Mayor? Or I'm sorry, Mayor?
So they're just black and white copiers, both things?
That is, through the chair, that is correct, just black and white, multi-function. So it's copy, scan, photocopy, I guess. Fax.
Yeah. You didn't, you weren't after color copier?
Through the chair, we looked, we looked into the option of color and for the money it was gonna cost and and the few amount of color copies that we do, it it just wasn't worth the, wasn't worth the dollars.
Can I ask a question then through the chair? Do we have the capability for you to send digital copies to the to the township to get to get color when you require it?
Through the chair, that's that's kind of our standard procedure is if we have something we want copied, we generally email it to a staff member at the at the township office and they print it for us.
And and the reason I ask that question, Mr. Chair, is that there are many graphs that we receive where unless you can see the colors, it it the graphs don't mean anything. And so I just, I just wanna have know that we've got that that capability. I have no problem with the recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor? Counselor Hunter? Gentlemen? Okay, thank you. Okay, could I have a recommendation for?
So moved.
So I have a mover. Do you have a second here? Mr. Bush? Thank you very much. I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Thank you. And that brings us to seven F, which is the twenty twenty Cardinal Drinking Water System Inspection Report. And this also is an information item only. And before before Mr. Shaw says it, I'm gonna say it. You got a hundred percent. I think it's fantastic. Mr. Shaw, would you would you highlight this report for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On November fourth, twenty twenty, an announced inspection of the Cardinal Drinking Water System was undertaken by Mr. Daniel White, our provincial inspector. The focused inspection examined the compliance of various applicable provincial acts, regulations and permits, training certification requirements. There was kind of drawn out due to COVID. The November fourth visit was for the physical inspection. And staff had to email various documents and pictures of the log and so forth to the inspector that he required and picked out. Just like to take the opportunity to acknowledge the efforts of the Environmental Services Department, the support personnel and council for achieving that hundred percent result. The appendix with the inspection rating is attached for your viewing. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Questions or concerns? I hear well done all around.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on. And that brings us to the twenty twenty Prescott Drinking Water System Report. There is a recommendation with this. So, Mr. Shaw, would you like to highlight this this report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Owners of municipal drinking water systems are required to ensure that no later than February twenty eighth of the following year, an annual report is repaired in accordance to section eleven, Ontario Regulation one seventy oh three. Additionally, by March thirty first each year, the water system summary report prepared in accordance with the subjects in two and three, schedule twenty-two dash two, Ontario Reg one seventy. In our township, we do two separate reports and Prescott combines their reports. The the report is required to be provided for, since they are are the the producer and to our distribution, they have to provide us with the report for council's review. And attach this report for your review. The recommendation recommends that council receive and review the twenty twenty water annual summary report for the Prescott Water System. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Okay, you've had a chance to read the briefing note and everything that goes with it. Questions or concerns? I'll start with advisory members, Mr. Bush, Mr. Packwood, Counselor Hunter, Deputy Mayor? Mr. Mayor? And Counselor Dillawatt?
I'd just like to say, I see that Tom Presley did a a lot of major maintenance on that water system this year. When you read everything they did, like chemical help maintenance, feedback inspection and maintenance, they've done a heck of a lot of work there. So all of it pays off. Keeper maintaining our product, stay up. Well done by Prescott. Thank you.
Good. Now, could I have a Mr. Shaw, underline the recommendation. Could I have a mover for the recommendation, please? I have a mover with Mayor Sales, second. Mr. Packwood, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's Carrie. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, that brings us to seven H, which is the dust suppressant tender. Again, a recommendation with this. We've had, looks like we have four bidders. And Mr. Shaw, is there anything you'd like to highlight regarding this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This action item is toward supply and application of road dust suppressant to tender in conjunction with the grander application in road reshaping liquid dust suppressant, either magnesium chloride or calcium chloride, is applied to mitigate and control dust on gravel roads. We have three, three tender submissions. Innovative Surface Solutions out of Ajax was the lowest at nineteen eighteen point, yeah, nineteen eighty-nine cents, point one nine eight nine cents and a total cost of forty one thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars. And that is for two thousand or two hundred and ten thousand liters of liquid dust suppressant. And recommendation that committee recommends that council approve and award the supply of dust suppressant tender to innovative surface solutions at the unit rate of point one nine eight nine per liter for a maximum of fifty-five thousand dollars, including non-rebated HST.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Okay, you've had a chance to read the read the briefing note. Any questions or concerns? I'll start with Mr. Dillawatt, Counselor Dillawatt.
Uh, no, it's too bad we couldn't get the people that we deal with. They're late, but they they leave with the.
No, nothing. Mr. Mayor?
So the tender is for two hundred and ten thousand liters loaded, delivered and applied. What length of road network do we apply it to?
I don't have the exact number, but I can get that for the next, for council being of desire.
Okay, is that included in the tender documents so that they know the kilometers?
It's it's by the total liters.
How do we determine? How do we determine the total liters? Isn't it so much per kilometer?
I believe so. It's a measured rate of application.
And do we do, do we, do we apply that dust suppressant on each lane or down the center lane?
I believe it's down the center.
So it's so so the kilometers is just the length of kilometers traveled, not not double the length?
That's my understanding.
Through the, through the chair, correction. It's it's applied on all gravel roads, which are, I I wanna say something like sixty kilometers of gravel roads. Fifty, sixty kilometers, I believe, of gravel roads, you mean? That's off the top of my head, so.
And just down the center?
Down, down, down.
I just can't figure out what the what's causing the difference in rates. The the first two are fairly close. Nineteen, well, say twenty cents and twenty-two cents, they're fairly close. But from twenty-two cents to thirty-one and a half cents, that's a fairly big jump. So what what has triggered these differences in pricing? That's what I'm trying to hit my end for.
So through the through the chair, there's been a number of changes in this business, I guess I would call it. We we used to receive our pricing from Denkem, Dally and Pollard Highway Products. And I believe Daily bought out Denkem.
No, they bought out Morris.
Okay, then maybe Morris bought out Denkem before, before. They're they're under the, Denkem is under the Daily umbrella, however you want to word it.
Or they really?
Yes. The only reason that I can say that with reasonable confidence is that the individual that that used to be the contact at Denkem is is now the, the holder of the.
Oh, okay. So there's been two removed, I haven't seen one.
Yes, correct. And Morris Chemical also used to. But in all, in all fairness, Pollard Highway Products have always been high in their in their submissions.
And can you tell me, to the, to the chair? Daily was low last year. They bought the tender.
That that is, that is, that is correct. It was prior to prior, prior to that, it was Denkem. And then last year it was, what was Daily?
Okay, so the next question is, what is the product that they're going to supply? Are they supplying magnesium chloride or calcium chloride? Or do we know as a result of the tender, or do we just leave it to them to do whatever they want?
Mr. Shaw, answer that. Go ahead, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. They were supplying calcium chloride. I I spoke to them today and that that was what they said. So that would be the thirty-five percent calcium chloride solution. They have a depot in Morrisburg. The company itself is out of Ajax.
And and the next thing is, when we, when we put out our tender, then do we, do we specify the concentration? This is thirty-five percent, water down to thirty-five percent. Do we, in our tender document, do we report, do we specify the concentration?
Through the chair, yes, we do.
And do we supply it? Do we, do we require it at thirty-five percent?
They they have a range, but it's within one percent, I think.
Oh.
So it's it's listed as thirty-five percent. Sorry, I'll just grab the spec sheet here. Yeah, their typical values are thirty-five percent, minimum thirty-four percent and maximum thirty-six percent.
So there's nothing in there that gives you a reason for your conspiracy?
No, through the, through the chair, I think the tender in in the direct if I'm wrong, but thirty-five percent for calcium and the equivalent is thirty percent for vacuum. Okay. Deputy Mayor, anything? No. Counselor Hunter?
Why would we give them a choice between calcium chloride and magnesium chloride? Why are we not specifying magnesium?
Or calcium?
I'm just saying why aren't we specifying magnesium? Magnesium are more effective.
Was it really? Yes, Mr. Shaw?
Through the chair. Last year, I believe that we ended up with magnesium because there wasn't the calcium available. And I believe the cost of magnesium is typically higher.
Okay, thank you.
That's a far better job, especially the dry ones. Magnesium will draw moisture from the air, calcium.
Mr. Packwood? And Mr. Bush? Okay, we've got our concerns and situations out of the way. The recommendation reads, well, Mr. Shaw read the recommendation, it was a tender to innovative surface solutions and to a maximum of fifty-five thousand dollars, including non-rebatable HST. Could I have a mover, please? Mr. Packwood and second? Counselor Hunter, thank you. All in favor? Aye, Carrie, thank you. That brings us to seven I. This is our last action information item for for this evening. And this is for the crushed rock tender, and agents ninety-two and ninety-three of your package. We do have a recommendation again on this and yes. It was two-sided paper, I'm getting them mixed up. And and this is the one we have before the four bidders on. I apologize for the last, I said four, it was only three. Mr. Shaw, would you highlight the crushed rock tender? Oh, yes. Yes, and just, just for the, for information, Counselor Hunter has looked at its podium and stepped aside, he has announced a conflict of interest on this, on this resolution. Thank you. So, Mr. Shaw, would you like to highlight this for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on the February twenty-fourth, local companies in, were placed on the website, supply of approximately seventy-five hundred metric tons of crushed rock for gravel road resurfacing, reshaping. And the the successful Betterwell Supply Hall spread five-eighths crushed rock to specific unpaved roads throughout the township. Staff received four submissions and Willis Kerr was the the lowest. The twenty twenty-one budget includes ninety-nine thousand dollars for maintenance gravel. And the low bid, as I mentioned, was ninety-one thousand eight seventy-five from Willis Kerr. Was about a one point zero five percent decrease and about seven thousand dollars lower than proposed budget. Recommendation that committee recommend that council award the supply of crushed rock tender to Willis Kerr Contracting Limited at the unit price of twelve dollars and twenty-five cents per metric ton to a maximum amount of ninety-nine thousand dollars, including non-rebated HST.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Okay, any, any questions or concerns regarding the crushed rock? Could I start with Counselor Dillawatt? Go ahead, Counselor.
Just have one here. So do we do the sixty kilometers due to care to the CEO or to or do we do the whole sixty kilometer roads after we put the after we put the dust down?
Through the chair, typically the gravel goes down first and then the dust suppressant on top to, because you'll end up with quite a bit of powder. Don't want the the fresh gravel with the dust blowing out of it, because then it erodes the surface much more easy.
And then we do this every year through all the roads, to all the all the gravel roads, the super plumber?
Through the chair, that's correct. Up to seventy-five hundred.
Just, just, just to, just to clarify that, there's not gravel applied to all sixty. It's typically the roads that are are in most needed, it's usually a very three-year cycle before we, before we get completed. So you're going, so it's very funny.
Some roads and some roads and some roads.
Correct.
So they all get done?
They, they, they have it done in a very three, three, four, four-year period.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Counselor, is that the answer to your question?
Just one more, then, how do we arrive at seventy-five hundred? Every year? Is that our number, seventy-five as a rule? And then we just alternate as we go to the roads?
Through the chair, that from past practice.
Of seventy-five record time?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
So this time?
So, this kind, this is a tricky question, I'm gonna, I'm gonna warn you ahead of time, it's a tricky question. So the tender was issued on February the twenty-fourth. Did the tender indicate lowest or any supplier not necessarily accepted? And the reason I say that is because we've been doing this over and over and over again. The same seven thousand, I remember at one time it was much higher than seven thousand cubic feet, seven thousand metric ton. And it was always my contention that this money would be better accumulated over a three or four-year period and put into a. Into a major road reconstruction project rather than, you know, continuously dumping gravel. On twenty kilometers of road, which promptly gets spread off into the ditches, and. And so I, I really want to know, did, did the tender document indicate lowest or any tender not necessarily accepted? Because it was before budget approval.
So, 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 so through the, through the chair, every tender that is. Has that clause in it. Through, through the procurement policy, as it's followed by staff, you know, duty. We, we include that clause in.
Thank you very much.
Anything over me because we require council approval. Mr. Mayor, you got it? Deputy Mayor? Counselor Hunter?
No, he doesn't. No, he doesn't.
And advisory members, Mr. Packwood and Mr. Bush, no, no questions or concerns?
And, and, and I know within Mr. Chairman that I got no pickup on my worries.
Okay, we, Mr. Shaw has, has outlined the, the recommendation, it has been read. Can I have a rumor for this deputy mayor of Asia in a second here? Mr. Bush, thank you, all in favor? It's Gary, thank you so much. And Counselor Hunter has resumed his, his seat at, at his podium for, for the duration of the, of the evening tonight. Thank you. And that leads us now to number eight, which is counselor inquiries, notices of motion. Hearing any?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Counselor Billups.
I wonder if we could send off. Mayor, like, here, just send off a letter to the counties, see if we can look into. A yield sign or stop sign, make it a four-way stop at County Road Forty-four. In Angeles restaurant. It's a three-way stop now, but somebody's gonna get hit. So. Pretty bad there, I gotta look.
Through, through the chair, do you have a little better clarification on that?
Be right there, corner of what, sixteen and forty-four. Coming off. It's a three-way, it's a three-way stop now. So if you're, if you're east, west, north, south, south is pretty true.
South is the continuation of County Road Forty-four, which makes a right turn to go to.
Yeah, or go straight down to.
Correct, so, so, and just the, the, the east side.
East side, then, you'll always find the line.
That, 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 that's correct, so it's not really, I wouldn't necessarily.
But there's, there's, there's three stop signs, I guess not, but there is three stop signs. There, but that one going south, there is not, nothing there, even a yield sign, it may be slowing them off.
What, you're a yield?
Sorry.
Why, why would it be a yield, you're supposed to stop another year.
No, I'm not coming south.
No, but he wants a yield sign for the ones going south.
Yeah, yield or stop for them to yield. Well, stop, four-way stop, because someone's gonna get.
He wants to take away the right-of-way and make them stop.
Yeah. The yield sign doesn't work.
Other stop sign, four-way stop.
That, that, that's, that, that's where I was trying, okay, so you, so what you're looking for is for the, for the county to consider a stop sign. Heading south on forty-four at the intersection.
Yeah, well, excuse me, that, that's just one counselor's opinion.
No, no, I'm just, I, I, I'm trying to, yes, to the chair, I'm trying, I, I'm just trying to clarify what, what that was in the, the, the council requires, notice of motion, that's all.
Well, I look at it the, the same way as Counselor Hunter, that forty-four just comes down and turns right. You know, and, and, and that, and that's the right-of-way. Folks from the east are coming off private property, they're required to yield to incoming traffic. And folk, and, and traffic coming north is coming to an abrupt stop, a full stop. At the end of Rooney, Rooney Road. So, I mean, I don't, I don't see any reason for a stop sign, it's, it's the right-of-way for that, for County Road forty-four to sixteen. When they come through there, though, Rooney Road. Sometimes you can't even see a car that goes so fast, like, when it goes, goes out there. Jeez, that's, that's a trouble, and I've seen it happen, I mean, I'm, I'm just making, I just. I seen it myself, and I was getting tax collectors asked me to look into it, and I said I would, that's all.
Isn't it an eighty-kilometer zone there? I believe it is. So.
Make the corner of eighty kilometers.
You sure can.
Rooney Road, you can go eighty kilometers an hour.
Yes, you can, yeah, yeah. Deputy Mayor, do you have any input?
I don't think so.
Counselor Hunter?
I just don't see what a stop sign, sign, being, and the ones coming, that are gonna break the stop sign coming out of the way, we're still gonna break the stop sign. Them stopping's not gonna save anything, so. The ones coming over Angeles, the ones I've seen, the ones, trucks coming over Angeles and cars that don't bother stopping, coming over Angeles, they're heading to. The Forest Xteen Highway, that just drag it across and don't bother stopping for the cars coming off, following on forty-four, are in trouble. They're mostly Angeles, and come, go, turn out, and they just keep coming right down the cross, don't bother stopping. Most people always stop because they're a car, a truck, and it's a transport coming across. Falling out in front of you, so.
But that, Mr. Chair, that's a clear violation, when you come off private property onto a golden highway, that's a clear violation, you don't need a stop sign there.
Mr. Packwood, I know you know the intersection well.
Yes, I do, very well.
Do you have any comments?
I agree with Counselor Hunter and everybody else, I can't see the stop sign there at all. One of the problems is, is there's no barrier. Along the, where the restaurant is, there's no real defined entrance, and people just cut right across. That's what the problem is.
We need a goal-defined entrance and exit.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Bush, do you have anything to add?
No, I, I think as long as everyone's following the rules that they're supposed to be following, then it. I've never seen it be an issue, but.
Okay, and I, I actually concur with, with Counselor Hunter, that I, I can't see, personally, I can't see. In a, a, a stop sign doing much good there, to be quite truthful, but. Anyway, so, so staff, you'll, will you? Send off a letter to counties based on the information we've heard tonight? Most of the, most of the committee does not favor the.
Why do you send a letter?
So that's what I'm asking.
Through, through the chair, the stats won't, won't do any follow-up.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Okay, any other inquiries or notices of motion? Hearing none, we'll move on, and we come to the mayor's report.
Okay, just a couple of things, so, as you know, the county's finally completed their fire service review. Are you still there, Chief Moore?
No, he's not.
Oh, he's gone. Well, as you know, counties completed their fire service review, and we had the report from the consultant at the. At the committee of the whole meeting Tuesday last week. I asked the C O to make a full copy of the report available to all members of council, because we really should look at it. Actually, we really should read it in its entirety. Let me say first of all, that I don't think that there is much appetite around county council table to proceed. Along the recommendations that, with the main recommendation that was recommended by the reporter, which is to move to a regional fire service. With a regional fire chief, and then a regional fire prevention officer, and a regional training officer. And then a number of deputy chiefs and associate chiefs, a fairly big structure. So I, I don't see any appetite for that particular recommendation. But I do see a fair amount of appetite around some of the smaller, more immediately. Executable recommendations, such things as moving to standardized bunker gear. Moving to some standardized equipment, moving perhaps even to some standardized truck specifications. In other words, standard specifications for tankers, standard specifications for tanker pumpers, that kind of thing. So, the recommendation that county council is going to be dealing with is, when, when it comes to next steps, is. How to set up and what type of a committee to set up to move to next steps. And I think it's, it's incumbent upon us as a governance body here to provide some direction to our chief. Our chief has been intimately involved with the report, he was one of the few chiefs that was a, a part of the, a part of the, of the ongoing management committee. And I don't know, Dave, maybe you could maybe clarify your role in a, to a greater degree. As the way it was explained to me is that the chiefs met sort of alternately every second week, and that the C Os met. Sort of alternately every second week to talk on this topic, is that roughly how you saw it?
So, so through, through, through the chair, so, so there was a steering committee formed of, of, of four C Os. And they, they, they would meet. Right, right off the bat, they were meeting every week, and then we transitioned every, every two weeks with, with the alternating weeks of, of the consultants meeting with the, with, with the fire chiefs.
And there was four chiefs as well, was there not?
I, I, actually, it was open to, to, to all chiefs.
But they didn't all participate?
Depending on, on, on schedules, I, I would certainly say that not, not all the chiefs were, were, were at every meeting.
Right, so we're really at the point where we as a governing body have a, a role to play. Because there's dollars involved here, we have a role to play in, in sort of. Providing our chief with some thoughts about, about the study. So, I, I mean, I'm just asking that all of our members. Read that report, understand where it's coming from, and let me say first of all, that the major premise of this report is that. Fire services' major responsibility over the last twenty years has moved significantly from putting out structured fires. To fire preventions, preventing the fire in the first place, that is the big thing. And you know, the, the, one of the chiefs gave a very interesting story. First of all. If a fire occurs within a structure, you have three to five minutes to get out. If you're not out in three to five minutes, you're finished. And it takes between seven and nine minutes for the first fire truck to arrive, and those are actual statistics. So, the whole idea of buying more trucks or more stations to get the fire quicker isn't going to save you. And as the retired chief that was a part of this group said. You know, when you actually talk to the fire, the guys that join fire departments so that they can protect their fellow citizens. And you ask them the following question, you'll pretty well always get the same answer. Which would you rather do? Would you rather continue to train to fight structured fires and get there five minutes late and find the dead bodies? Or would you rather put more of your emphasis on prevention, so that when you get there, the family is waiting at the end of the driveway? Then that's the question, and you know, I think that's the kind of thing that we have to say to our chief. So that he knows where we as a governing body are coming from. Okay, that's the first on my.
Hold on, while, while we're still on, on this one, if I can ask one question, so, and, and I, for me, it's kind of important, when it comes to the, I guess it's an S D R of fire. The, the document that, that went out, or the R F P that, that would have went out from the counties, will that be available as well as the report? To see exactly what the counties asked for when they received the report? Because I think that that's important, that we know exactly what was being asked for in that report, as well as what we got.
In other words, in terms of reference?
Yes.
Yes, and I, I would.
So, if I may, through the chair, I believe that that's already in the council's mailbox.
Oh, that answers your question.
Answers my question.
Okay, well, as a matter of fact, does this one here request for proposal?
Correct.
Is that the, sort of the summary of it?
That is, that, that is the summary.
Oh, okay, okay. The other thing that's available, and I, I picked them up on the last trip to county, it wasn't really available on the day. The chief, the, the principal from the consulting firm that made the report had a series of slides, and I asked for the slide deck, so. I'll get you the slide deck, and maybe you can circulate the slide deck.
May through the chair, I, I, I believe, it was a busy week last week, I believe that I did forward that off to council, that presentation slide deck.
Okay, and I, I just can't recall it, so.
If, if, if I have it, I will make a note to resend tomorrow.
Okay.
The, and just one comment to sort of reiterate what, what you said too before about the. Sort of prevention versus suppression. When we sat through, I don't know if everybody on council was there, but we did it at the Merck Hall at Ontario Fire Marshal's Office. I think not last year, it might have even been the year before. And the Fire Marshal's Office then was certainly telling us to weigh the costs of buying a new tanker against. How many lives would be saved by spending that same amount of money to prevent fires? Instead of worrying about suppressing them, but educating so that there, there was more prevention, so.
And, and I guess the point that this guy was trying to make is, the pamphlets left at, at, at fairs, and. You know, fire chief going into a school once a year, and, you know, the, the way we do fire prevention right now is not. Robust enough to really capture the attention of the public. Okay.
So I'll spark you.
I'll, I'll move on a little bit. I, earlier tonight, I just circulated to all members of council, apologies to you two gentlemen, because I have Mark's email address, but not yours, but. They will forward it to you, so all members of council have been invited to, to attend the E O R N. Cell Gap project announcement on Friday, the nineteenth, at eleven-thirty, so. They're going to announce who the successful tender was to execute on the Cell Gap project. And so that project, now, once they make the announcement, should start fairly soon. As you know, it's already been funded, the sources of money have been identified, now. Once that project gets underway, E O R N will then turn their full attention to the next third project, which is their gigabyte up, gigabyte down. And, you know, that's a heavy lobbying effort, which is probably going to go on for a couple of years before it gets funded. I just wanted to mention one other thing, very significant that happened today. I'm assuming that you all heard it on the news, of Rogers' agreed deal, or deal, signed deal apparently, to buy out Shaw. So this is a major game changer for Canada, multi-billion dollar deal. And it will make the new company, Rogers-Shaw, combined about the same bulk as Bell, and it'll be a national company all across Canada, big deal. And last thing, just a brief thing for council and members, so the deputy mayor, myself, and the C O met today again. At another meeting with Infrastructure Ontario, and we'll have a full debriefing on that meeting, at a committee of the whole meeting next Monday. Got to get our thoughts in order a little bit, but just wanted to say that we did have the meeting, it was very productive and medical with that. So that's the mayor's report for today.
Question, Mr. Mayor? What was the announcement today at Mallory Town, the church in Mallory Town?
And you know what, I saw that there was an announcement in Mallory Town concerning the St. Lawrence Parks Commission, but I did not see what it was.
It's five point five million in, in dollars for heritage upgrades to.
The church?
Tourist tourist attractions, it was Minister McLeod and and Minister Clark.
Yes.
And Bob Linsman. That was all.
So it was for St. Lawrence Parks Commission?
Yeah, St. Lawrence Parks Commission, five point five million, but I I didn't get any further than that.
Okay, thank you for that, just just wondered, I did see the announcement. And near and then about it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, any any questions to the mayor regarding this report, thank you. Okay, we now move to, uh, question period, and there's no one in the gallery other than ourselves. So, uh, we'll move on to closed session. And we have a, uh, we have a mover to.
Rhythm of the sound, second by Deputy Mayor, is that ready proceeding closed session, seven forty P M, ordered. Minister or local board replies specifically published works from minutes of closed session dated February sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, and, uh, Mr. Packwood and Mr. Bush, because of the sensitive nature of this closed session. Uh, this is not, uh, not for your, uh, eyes or ears at this time, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's Carrie.
Mr. Chair, and the open meeting committee does now resume at eight twenty-two P M.
Change that line.
Are you recording?
I'll let you change, when you read it, I have to.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
That's Carrie, thank you. Okay, and so reporting of of closed session that we discussed the, uh. Minutes of the closed session dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and discussed a, uh. Situation in regards to section two thirty-nine point two B, uh, personal matters of a identif- identifiable individual.
So I have a pool of minutes if you'd like me to.
Go go ahead.
So moved by myself, seconded by Counselor John Hunter, the committee of the whole receives and approves. The closed session minutes dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. And that brings us to adjournment, and I have a mover by Marceau and a second by Counselor Dillawatt. How come I have to read this? The committee of the whole does now adjourn at eight twenty-four P M. All in favor? Carrie.